This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Well, Tom sent out. Let me get my agenda because it does say what we have to do. Barbara said confirmed what I'm going to talk about tonight are the ones that are on public.
Great.
Prove the minutes from past meeting, Tom sent them out. Can I have a motion to approve?
The most.
Second, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
We have nobody in Ramon, okay? Mayor's communication, public speak, she's not here, she doesn't get to communicate, so. First thing, water meters, this is an annual event. I have no questions. We have to do these meters a certain amount every year. Want to say anything about it on record?
Uh, the only thing is I've asked for slightly more, about twenty percent more this year to make up for a twenty percent increase across the board in meter.
All right, let me write that down. I could write things down.
Radio reading, everything is up about twenty percent, so.
Is, is, are all our meters radio reading now?
Not all, we're still picking away at some of the older ones.
Twenty percent more. To catch up.
And just for clarification, this is for resident homes that have to go in and years have to be changed?
We supply meters, these size two inches or below, so it could be. A five inch meter in a, in a regular single family house or up to a two inch meter, save for. Uh, but you stand the savings bank on our chemistry has a two inch meter, but that size.
Any other questions? Omar, anything? I need a, uh, a motion to approve sixty thousand dollars from enterprise retained earnings to. FY twenty-three water meters, sixty thousand dollars, replaces approximately two hundred fifty water meters.
Some more.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Now we just did water meter, meters, I'm not here yet. Uh, it's okay, buddy. Uh, we approved the minutes and we just did the water meters, which was relatively easy, but. I'll allow you to ask a question if you'd like.
Uh, but it's not my first radio on the water meter.
I didn't think so. All right, that's done. Let's see, my next one to be done is twenty-two, five hundred for grant match funding for MVP Emerald Place. And I put it in here, here it is. Why don't you explain it, Greg?
So we received a hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars in, uh, municipal, municipal vulnerability fairness grant funding. Um, the, uh, the Senate Office of Environmental Affairs. And part of that, to, to take that, to accept that funding, we have to commit to a match of twenty-two thousand five hundred. And, uh, some staff, they're also committing some staff time to meet the whole match, but the actual cash portion is twenty-two thousand five hundred.
What's our, with, with time and everything, was it fifty percent or?
Uh, I don't know the exact percentage, it's closer to twenty, but we have, uh. We have a slope issue over there where the slope is kind of, is, is beginning to fail and slide towards that we need to get. You probably, probably gonna be a pretty extensive repair over that once. This, what we're covering with this grant and the appropriation is some of the design, the design work to come up with a solution to. Slow failure we're seeing over there. On Emerald Place, you guys, the sidewalk over the years has been repaired and is crumbling and it's.
Any questions, council? Sure, we get a nice hundred seventeen thousand dollar grant, I think it's great that we're only having to put. And again, enterprise retained earnings, which is the free cash in the enterprise account. Uh, I have no problem, Omar. Um, I need a motion to approve twenty-two thousand five hundred from enterprise retained earnings to be transferred to the Emerald Place Resiliency, twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Some more.
Second. We're the motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Next one is seventy-eight thousand. Let me look for that, okay. Why do we have to constantly fix sewers? Honestly, God, they were just, they're brand new, aren't they?
They're owned from eighteen ninety-seven, so.
Eighteen ninety-seven, that's good information. I know it's probably in your little thing here.
Yeah, a portion of it, I mean, and some of the due diligence we had to do for the, uh, in preparation for the Union Street construction project, we came across that pipe. It's also running beneath the old Harry Scarry building. And with their plans to put a new building up there, we need to get it out from under the building, working with the property owner to have official easement so that our pipe can cross that lot. Uh, there was not, one was never recorded when the original pipe was put in, but.
So was that pipe in use, technically?
Yes, yeah, it's carrying the flow from pretty much everything on Pason Avenue from, uh, railroad down. It's a public safety complex.
So it was discovered during the Union Street?
Uh, it's during some of the planning for that and the utility mark outs that we needed to do, guys. And, and some of the, uh, correspondence we have with the building owners regarding how rediscovered being taken down.
What year was that, you said?
Eighteen ninety-seven.
Just thought of something, I can't remember anymore. How much of the sewer line is getting repaired?
Uh, we do about four hundred feet.
Four hundred feet?
Yeah. Uh, we did, it was right here, right, right across from, say, between.
So what are these eighteen ninety-seven sewer lines made of? Don't tell me what.
It was a clay tiled pipe, yeah.
Clay tile?
Yeah.
And it lasted that long?
Yeah, it's still flowing.
Wow.
Well, how many leaks?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, I think we need to fix the sewer line. What do you think, Councillor? Spirit of me?
Uh, we certainly couldn't let them build a building over the top of it, sure, and knowing that there was a lot of, uh. A lot of people wanted that Harry Scarry building removed, you know, because there was a lot of benefits of doing it and. It'll be in the alleyway between the two buildings, establish permanent easement through there, so we can maintain.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well.
Okay, I have no more questions. Councillors have questions? I need a motion to approve seventy-eight thousand sixty-eight dollars from enterprise retained earnings. To FY twenty-three Union Street Sewer Repair.
Some more. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Two trucks. One twenty, let me get to that. Capital stabilization. Um. Obviously, there are some concerns that we'd love these to be hybrid or. More electric, but on, in my opinion. The first thing that comes with any department is what are they needed for and what are the vehicles that you could find capable of doing? Have you been able to find a hybrid that'll do the job?
No, no, no one's making a medium duty truck that'll take a nine foot plow or, you know, like, over ten thousand pounds or be able to put. Uh, solder, sand in the back of it. There's just not, nothing, light duty, electric and hybrid trucks are, are hitting the market. I don't, I don't think, I think if I wanted to order an F-150 Lightning today, I don't think I could get it in for a year and a half or two years.
And that's an all-electric or is it?
That's an all-electric, but they're just not, we couldn't, we couldn't outfit it for the needs of the highway department. We may need to move, uh. Tow the roller with it if we're out doing asphalt maintenance or move a piece of equipment and they're just not. They're not making up a hybrid or fully electrified vehicle capable. Only the kind of weight we need to tow, and a lot, and some of its availability too, I mean, these, these, the thing is. We have vehicles over there, we're replacing the ninety-four, so the truck's thirty, almost thirty years old.
And what's the other one?
The other one is a two thousand seven, I believe, that was previously belonged to the U.S. Forest Service, so it was a hand-me-down from them when we got it. And they're just, years of being in New England and they wouldn't know what these trucks do, they just, they, they start to rot and wear out. Nice thing about the vehicles I'm working on purchasing here is I can have them here and in our fleet, I think by the middle of March, middle to the end of March.
Really?
Yeah, and that's one of the challenges, I think you guys appropriated some money last. Let's say, well, not this November that just passed, but the November prior, for an F-550 pickup to order from Ford. Ford just accepted that order from us last month, and that's probably another.
Why?
Because of just global supply chain issues and they're not, they weren't willing to take truck orders. So.
Okay.
Part of the, uh, thing, and I don't want, in the meantime, say we have to wait two years or, or three years for another, for. Fully electric, medium to heavy duty pickup to become available. In the meantime, I have to spend money on vehicles that were, that are going to be auctioned off.
I think, I think maintenance.
Wise to do that.
I think we need to be fiscally responsible from the maintenance point of view. Secondly, I don't want this city to be. A guinea pig for brand new electric vehicles. I'd like to see reliability studies on. Let some other city buy the first ones and tell us how they are. I'm serious, I, I read. I was looking into buying. All-electric vehicle at my particular kind of class of vehicle. And in my opinion, Consumer Reports said, wait.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see reliability.
Yeah, sure.
Mayor.
So I hope that, I mean, one, decarbonization plan for our fleet that we have done all around Earth Day. Um, you're going to see similar purchases that are saying to go to fossil fuels because we are driving trucks that are thirty-five years old. And we are doing less harm to the earth by upgrading to this. The other, the, the trick or the, the kind of twist here is you start driving those kind of vehicles, you're putting miles on them. Well, hopefully the market, um, you know, kind of flushes itself out, things get cheaper, there's more supply. And now you've got a twenty-twenty-two pickup that maybe has sixty thousand miles on it and it's actually worth eleven months. And we are going to be able to flip, so like the bottom end of our fleet, for instance, if we didn't get these trucks, we. It would be a, a double net loss. One, we'd run them and fix them and spend money there, but two, the impact on carbon remains and would, um. So I would say that too, hopefully, I think there might be one more request, I think it's DPW's trucks that really need to go. Um, that you won't see, like, on-off requests or what's like a more routine duty of a vehicle. Um, I think supply chain and a whole bunch of other things, it's the way we should be purchasing cars or fleet. Um, and switching over to fleet, people feel like you just pick a car brand and that's it. That's not how fleet purchasing works anymore. You can actually write sizes of cars and, and the, the idea behind the decarbonization plan for our vehicles. Include all of our vehicles, but we're gonna start right in the middle, the ones that are used the most, that are available. And what you're more likely to see is me coming forward and saying, and this year. We are going to order, I hope I'm gonna be doing early in twenty twenty-four, this full year twenty-four, we're gonna order three cars right now. Totally electric cars, and we're gonna get them in twenty twenty-five. And then in the next fiscal year, we'll order another three cars, and we'll get those in twenty twenty-six. And get ahead of it and start flipping as the heavier duty cars come on market. And it'll become a capital plan, um, because of supply chain, um, because of seeing what works and what doesn't work and with the fleet. You know, if we get the coolest new whatever, electric plow truck or whatnot, it doesn't work. With the fleet relationship, we can flip it right back or we have more of the ability to negotiate. Um, but it was very eye-opening to me when I was talking to. Decarbonization folks at the staff, they said, yeah, absolutely, grab those trucks. I was like, yeah, but they're not, and they're like, look, look at what's going on now with your thirty-five-year-old truck and what it's feeling. You know, look at the inefficiency, all of that, the repair, whatever, to replace it. And you're actually building an asset that will have some value when you replace these two trucks with electric, so.
Are we, uh, most of the manufacturers skipping hybrid on my way to electric?
No.
Because I like, like, I like that we can get hybrid in someplace.
Did you say no? Did someone say no or yes?
No, they're not.
No, they're not skipping, so in other words.
Hybrid's gonna be a real thing for a while.
Yeah, and I think that's good if, if we can't get the fully electric. With the hybrid.
I think it's more like charge shop, like, there are a lot of people who like the idea of electric, but wanna have a little gas.
And, and, and we don't have the.
It's a market.
We don't have the infrastructure for charging if you want to go on a trip. But in this case, in this case. I wanna go back to that truck you're waiting on. When we have, if I understand it correctly, if we have the fleet. We don't have to go to Ford. Is that because we went to Ford because they had the lowest price? I mean, why? If they can't deliver a truck, we couldn't try for somebody else or because they, they were the lowest bid on the state bid match or something?
Well, we buy them based from the Greater Boston Police Council, it's a cooperative first agreement. And we're able to work with Markout Ford employee on that. Like using a local dealer, because.
Oh, yeah.
We've had trucks that we bought from dealerships on the other side of the state, uh, based on cooperative first agreements and that presents challenges, I'll get the level.
My point is, you're not picking Ford just because it's a Ford, you're picking Ford for other reasons.
Yeah, basically.
Because if Chevy's making a truck that you could use, why not?
Well, yeah, we, we have some Chevys in the fleet that we've had problems with that we shouldn't have seen and. We, I mean, we had a truck in the water department, we just had to put a torque converter in, it's a two thousand sixteen, I think it was five or six thousand dollars by the time. Tell us back, our open truck had fifty-five thousand miles on it, no, that shouldn't happen, but, you know, all of them have different issues, we just have a great relationship with Markout Ford.
That's fine, I was just curious. If the fleet system the mayor's talking about will alleviate. We go out to bid for something or whatever we do, we can pick the manufacturer though.
We'll pick more than one manufacturer, not that for us.
Yeah, well, that's what I want to know.
The reality is, we're, we're opting into somebody else's collective fleet purchasing power. Who has very little investment in us for mass. And, and we've also not really bought cars more than one or two. We've never looked at the whole fleet and like, you know, I compare it to oxygen tanks, um, over at Fire, so. Uh, water meters, right, every year, no matter what, like, we're flipping over water meters, we should be doing that with vehicles. And, and it's automatic, but also if you're a longstanding customer of a fleet and you can switch fleet and, and car manufacturers. Then you at least have some leverage, and right now our leverage is through, you know, a great deal amount wise. But their investments, why is Markot, you know?
Well, okay.
Not to mention negotiating a fleet maintenance contract with a specific dealership in a geographic location that's central. Is something else, like, the reality is. Cars are not just what they used to be, I mean, I replaced a radiator. On my old BMW on the side of a California highway with a kid and it, and it took me fifteen minutes because it was just like layers. That's not happening anymore, they don't make those.
No, everything's computerized, especially when you talk about hybrid or electric.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Well, I have no problem with this purchase, Councillor.
Yeah, I have a question, and I'm gonna preface my question by saying, I'm not so naive that. I think that this would be the case, but I'm just trying to get clarification, right, so. I have a truck, right? And I have a plastic liner in the back, and I know that a plastic liner would not survive the work that you were all doing, right? But I also recognize that you work with salt, you work with sand, et cetera, and I've seen trucks that have kind of a. Some sort of spray lining to try to minimize the amount of damage that is done, and so. Are there things that we can do with these vehicles to minimize some of that?
Absolutely, yeah, we do it with all of our trucks. The guys we, we cope. Product called wood film, once or twice a year, if not more, to just to keep assault and, you know, eating away at it. These newer Fords are actually coming with aluminum bodies now, so they should.
Aluminum?
Yeah. So.
Well, the other thing, just to go back to the mayor, so you're, you're replacing a two thousand, a nine, a ninety-four. The. Ability of pollution control ninety-four is not what it's.
It's not.
So even though we're getting a gas truck.
Fully, yeah.
It's still a lot better.
Yeah.
And. I know that some of our trucks are diesel. I hope we get away from that because diesel.
These are, these are gas.
These are gas, but the bigger trucks, I'd love to see us not have to use diesel, diesel is so pollutant.
Yeah.
But you gotta get what you need to get.
That's probably, yeah.
Because fiscally responsible, and I say this again, maintenance costs have to be considered. And a modern truck versus an older truck is better for the environment. And as the mayor's saying, we can flip the truck if something comes out that we accept. I just wanna caution the mayor and everybody. Make sure we have some reliability figures and whatever electric vehicle you're getting, because. I've heard some nasty things about that they're putting them out so fast that the batteries. Aren't working for us, and I know we're only going from. Within a twenty-mile radius or something, but still. All right, any other questions on this one? Councillor Gomes.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Uh, for the public just looking, someone's gonna watch the video. This conversation is great because we, I think, we are gonna agree that we are concerned about the planet, but it's just because we do have. Our ordinance about the portion of fuel with efficient vehicles and, uh.
Whenever it's possible, isn't it that part?
And that's why, uh, Greg sent out this letter. With a translation of why we couldn't buy it at this time.
As I recall, the ordinance is if whenever possible.
Yes, but when, but when it's not possible, they have to provide and resupply that.
Right, and with that, that's done. Thank you for that, Councillor Gomes. Anything else, Councillors? Then I'll take a motion to approve one hundred and twenty thousand capital statement sanction to. Purchase two FY twenty-three Ford F-350 trucks.
Some more. Second.
All in favor? This'll take six votes at the meeting. Page two, you need to know that, that's. Uh, stabilization. Control requires six votes of the council. Uh, what do we got next? I did a hundred and twenty, sixty.
Sixty-five?
Is that one I highlighted?
Yes.
Okay. Sixty-five thousand for. Disposal of backlog of street sweeping. Where the hell are they now?
Piled at the highway department. Um, there's a lot of regulation around disposal of, um, street, street sweepings.
Really?
We have to have the pile sampled and has to, uh, meet a certain specification, be accepted by landfill, uh, because it's a central part of the state. Uh, so there was some discussion over a few years of, uh, with Pinear Valley Planning Commission about. Formulating, coming up with a regional system for disposing of street sweeps, and it kind of never came to pique. So, uh, if it's able to find a contractor that had a contract with, uh, Mass DOT that we're able to purchase their services on. Working with them, getting rid of, I'd like to get rid of the rest of it so that we're caught up and then build up a line item into our budget. So that we can dispose of them annually and we don't have a pile building up down there.
That's good to me, I don't have any questions, Councillor. Anything, Councillor?
Just, I, how big of a pile are we talking?
That's big, uh. We took, I think, fifteen loads, fourteen loads out of it already, and I'm talking, uh, trailer dump, large truckloads, I think. I think, I think it's about thirty, it's thirty-five hundred yards, I think this was down there. It's quite a bit.
Now this. Oh, we're talking after question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, now is this. It contains salt, it can gain, like, all of the stuff that you also put on the road.
Asphalt, um. When they sample it, they have to make sure the asphalt content is low enough for it to be landfilled, I think it's usually landfill cap.
What happens if, like, there's too much salt or stuff and you have to?
And they'll reject it, we have to pay more to send it to a different landfill.
Hmm, so it took a while to find a contractor that would do this, right?
Yeah, that's on a state bid, yeah. And that was willing to take on the sampling and help us with that.
Okay.
Can I ask another question? Is this something that is, um, like, by weight, is it something, hey, look at that, make it, okay.
By weight, yeah.
Because my. Next question was, is this something that we could. Potentially partner with another community and if it's in, like, a bulk amount, is that something that we can do?
Yeah, we could, I mean, we could look at, that's what Pinear Valley Plan Commission, you need someone to kind of bring that whole program together.
Well, they said they were trying to get a system, but.
They were, it just didn't come together.
He's had to go COVID, probably, yeah. You know, ten years from now, we'll be blaming COVID for everything.
Right.
Hell, I have no. I have no other question. Anything else? I need a motion to approve sixty-five thousand from Free Cash for Highway Professional Services to remove the backlog of street sweepings.
Some more. Second.
All in favor? What's next? Four thousand seven hundred and eight payment for salt FY twenty-two old bill. What I did with it? Hold on.
Wait, all right, I have this, what's, what happened?
Yeah, what's, I have it here. Morton Salt didn't get fully paid last year.
So Morton Salt had an issue with invoicing, it happened to a number of cities and towns in Massachusetts. And they did not send us an invoice for salt until, I believe we received it in November, yeah, we, we got it November fourteenth of twenty-two, after the fiscal year closed out. Uh, because of, for some reason, and their billing software didn't, didn't process the invoice when it was supposed to. And, uh, for us to pay it, we have to.
So we got an invoice.
This year's budget to cover.
In November, past.
For no fault, it wasn't any, any DPW staff member's fault or anything, anyone in from the city did, it's just Morton did set the invoice.
So we could say it's too late, we don't wanna pay.
Yeah, but we need salt, that's probably, I mean, that's what's stopping our salt deliveries, we've explained it. You know, they would acknowledge we have some responsibility, and so.
But just to, just to clarify, you said that you have to take it out of this year's budget in order to be able to, is that?
We have to move it to free cash to FY twenty-three snow with your council permission.
And then.
If you really pay the bill.
And this year. We haven't gotten much snow.
Oh, we're doing, we're doing all right, but, um. These storms where we have to put down a lot of salt still are expensive, so.
Yep, yep.
Um. I, I don't have a problem with it, um, it's unfortunate, but. So that's why we, free cash is kind of interesting because free cash is, a lot of it is from last year's budget, recertified. So we're kind of paying an old bill from last year's budget with the money that was left over from last year.
Right, so if we had paid it last year, then we wouldn't have had as much free cash, so it's kind of just.
The appropriation and the strain to cover this whole budget would have been forty-seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-eight cents more. Does that make sense?
All right, any other questions? Any other questions? I need a motion to approve four thousand seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-eight cents from Free Cash to pay for FY twenty-two snow and ice.
Some more. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next one is a hundred thousand dollars for the fuel account. And that's fuel, so the fleet public knows for the entire.
Entire city fleet, it's not just.
City fuel. And is this because of the massive increase in.
Yes.
Pricing?
Yeah, and I've tried to, I'm hoping we have enough in there so I don't have to come back this, this fiscal year, but. No, it's, it's, things have just been so volatile, it's hard to say.
Well, it keeps going up and down, it's gone down since the beginning of the year. So you've purchased stuff early in the fiscal year and it was a high price.
Well, we're on a contract that's based off of a daily, uh, petroleum price, I'm not exactly sure where. Set, but it's plus or minus a certain amount, and then we have an allotment that we purchase at a, at a certain amount, and then when that, that ran out, it gets pretty complicated. You're interested with the pricing as bad. All over the place, so.
But you basically buy in bulk.
Yes.
And then use it until hopefully you don't run out, but you might run out and then you have to.
Well, they keep getting deliveries, but they're running out of money.
We're not out of money, but we're.
We're totally getting caught.
To make it through the fiscal year.
Yeah.
Because of the price.
But in general, that's how it happens, yeah.
Okay.
I think we should keep our fleet, when we talk about all the vehicles, we're talking about the polysupplement, high.
Yeah, every, everything, every single vehicle in the city fleet draws from this. And it, uh, heating oil's in there too, so.
Heating oil?
Yeah, some part of these oils.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Take a motion to approve a hundred thousand dollars from Free Cash. To the DPW fuel account.
Some more. Second.
All, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Last one. Twenty-five thousand. For custodian. COA and City Hall. Uh, this is already in the pay plan, there's custodians in the pay plan, this is a new custodian?
Uh, yeah, an additional to, it's just to help keep up with, we need to do a better job of taking care of this building, the public safety complex and the COA.
Okay.
One person, we've had, certainly have one full-time custodian to do all of that. And, uh, he works early in the morning to. Like, I was at about five AM and works till two, and we need coverage for the buildings in his off hours. This acquisition allows us to have. Say, if one of the custodians on vacation, there's someone else we can call up, an after-hours problem, I had a urinal break at the, at the police department over the weekend and. Had to have someone come in, so things like that happen, and the book also found that.
You only have one custodian that deals with which buildings now?
We have, for the, for this building?
The custodian that we have now, which, what, what do they do?
So they have kind of shared duties where, um, one of them focuses most of his time on the public safety complex. And does a portion of the morning here to try to get offices clean before their staff in them. And then the new custodian is splitting his time half between. This building while it's occupied to do some of the things that need to happen when people are here and this, and the council aging.
That's the new one we're hiring now, so previous, but council and aging had no custodian prior to this.
They have, we have another one that works, a twelve hours a week that does cleaning in the school department.
That's what I wanted to find out.
He does cleaning in the school apartment and some minor cleaning over there, but finding that the COA needs, as, gets more use coming after COVID, we need to have, uh.
So we might not need the part-timer or?
Well, he does get the bathrooms cleaned and ready for when the school apartments come, it's a lot for Brian, uh, for. Well, he does get the bathrooms cleaned and ready for when the school apartments come. It's a lot for Ryan, for one of them.
And that's upstairs.
That's upstairs.
When you mean by that, we're not talking about the schools. We're talking about.
Yeah, it's just upstairs, this building, yeah.
Okay. And the other person just this floor downstairs?
Yes.
Okay. So people understand.
And this will help with the COA. And this is a fully benefited.
Yeah. It also gives us another person when there's a project that requires two, two custodians to whether it's like moving cat, moving furniture or cabinets or some of the changes that.
Well, also, if a custodian's sick or on vacation, what do you do?
We don't have anyone. Yeah.
So we have the staff to clean their own offices?
Well, it's the alternative, right?
I was wondering why the mayor had a vacuum in her office. All right. Any further discussion? I think this is good. Uh, I therefore ask for a motion to approve 25,000 from free cash to building operations.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I think that's all for next week. I got 15 minutes of my own personal time. Do we want to do any others? Up to you guys. Or is it up to me?
I guess it's up to you.
Yeah, it's up to you. And if you're not feeling well, then.
Well, I gotta go down to the theater anyway.
Yeah, so.
Show must go on.
If we're going to have to meet for this other stuff anyway, then I guess there's no reason to rush.
Well, we're going to have to meet. Can you tell me?
More, I can get some more projects. I can take my chance and ask that.
I can't, I can't, I can't put it on public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So that's the way it goes. I mean, if we talk about it now, it still doesn't go until the second day of March. Are we getting a lot more this meeting, you know?
I just have the rest of the list that you already.
Yeah. Yeah, you guys would be, yeah, busy, busy.
Well, next meeting I won't have any time restrictions, so. Maybe I'll feel better. Uh, okay. We're getting a lot?
Well, it's stuff.
There's only seven more on my list.
Yeah, but you're not the only department.
I'm just saying, yeah. I care.
I think you care. Yeah, yes, for the public. I would say the cooperation level among the departments in the city is very strong.
What I was going to ask you to take is the stuff that we want to get going on the safety complex.
Again, I could.
Yeah.
We can avoid them that this is a big meeting in March.
Well, let's do a couple more. I have 10 minutes. Let me find them. Which one are you looking at?
Well, so much for.
Do you want, you guys don't, we don't have to.
I don't care. You got nowhere to be.
Because I find.
It seems to be the process of the day. What are we looking at? Which one?
Uh, City Hall Safety Complex Maintenance.
How much is it?
About $50,000.
So.
Various maintenance needs, 50 base nav and a public safety.
Where did I?
$50,000 various maintenance.
I have Cherry Street. That's 50. 50,000 maintenance to City Hall. We'll explain this one.
Sure. Uh, we've had to make a number of plumbing repairs here in this building. I think it's, the all I can attribute to is that when the building was rehabbed, I think it was around 2002, 2003, when it became City Hall, we're just seeing plumbing pictures that became 20 years old. Uh, we've replaced several faucets, some of the internals on some of the toilets, urinals throughout the building. And some of the other cost is going to be for, this is also going to cover coating to be put on the stairs that the fire personnel use to access the second floor of the station on the far side of the building. Uh, it's concrete now. That building showing being 20 years old, it's beginning to, the concrete's starting to wear. For some reason, it wasn't installed on those stairs when the building was constructed. We want to get a.
I'm sorry, just I'm taking that. And what, what is this that used to be installed?
It's a Johnsonite, it's called. It's a, you see the stairs here, we believe it has that black plastic coating circles on it. It's air concrete on the far side of the fire station and that is just by the fire personnel going and out quite frequently. It's just starting to wear. It's starting to wear the concrete down. So we want to get the coating on that before it turns into a larger expense. Also going to purchase a, two different floor cleaning machines to be used at the council on aging to help get the floor cleaned in between activities there and have it dry immediately after. So we're going to fund some landscape improvements here at City Hall. And some HVAC preventative maintenance on this new equipment that's being installed as part of the Honeywell project that we need to have a more regimented maintenance program in place with her.
Okay.
Fund that for the remainder of this mystery.
You know, if I had known, I would have put this on the key. It didn't give me it.
I'm sorry?
If I had known, I would have put this on public hearings, but you didn't.
Uh, I mean, it's, it's not a huge rush. It's all stuff that.
On March 17th. Uh, any further discussion? Omar, nothing? Hearing none, I take a motion to approve $50,000 from free cash to miscellaneous building repairs.
Second.
All in favor? One more, that's it. And I'm just going to pick.
Well, which one does he want?
It doesn't matter. They all have to go on March 17th.
Yeah, I mean.
If we don't have to discuss it at the next meeting, then $20,000.
I was just trying to like.
This is an easy one. $20,000 from the electric bike revolving fund. We do this every year, cities electric vehicle and bicycle charging stations, money in, money out, right?
Basically, yes.
We've done this every year, Tom, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I have no problem with this. We have to do it. Any other questions, Connie? Any questions? Okay. I move, we approve, or you move, somebody moved, we approve $20,000 from free cash. Electric bike revolving 10,000 revenue, revenue EV charging and bike revolving 10,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Okay. Oh, we did two for next meeting.
Do you want one more?
No.
That's seven minutes.
I need time to clear up.
We got more time.
Motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Enough stick out of you guys.